Hello, I'm Dan Murphy and you're watching the Sherburne Annual Town Meeting, the second night. First night we got through 23 of the 32 warrant articles and right now we're waiting for a quorum to begin the second night. This second night will include the somewhat contentious 32nd warrant article which regards a proposed over 55 housing development on Maple Street. So if you're interested in voting on this or any of the other nine remaining warrant articles, please come down and let's hopefully this gets started very shortly. I had kind of started Tuesday night, I was talking briefly about some of the different opinions on this 32nd warrant article. The people who are in favor of this warrant article believe that it gives them more control over what kind of development happens on this property and those opposed are somewhat concerned about the impact this will make on the town, especially considering that there are similar projects currently in development which haven't completely been absorbed to examine the ramifications of these. Also in night one, we mostly agreed with the advisory committee, so if you received your advisory committee recommendations, for the most part, you can follow that to see what occurred. Two points of dissension were warrant article eight, line item number eight regarding the fire department's HVAC system. The HVAC system was as recommended that no action be taken and instead a favorable action was voted upon. Another one I believe is article 13 regarding some of the police department governance and that was voted on favorably despite I believe the advisory committee suggesting that a no action be taken on this article because favorable action was taken on both articles 11 and 12 which were also related to police department governance. We'll be starting tonight's town meeting with article 24 which will be pertaining to some new regulations regarding wetlands bylaws. The advisory committee has recommended no action be taken on this warrant article but there may be a presentation discussing this and if you're interested in debate, I would recommend that you hurry down and help us form a quorum and vote on this as you see fit, assuming of course you're a Sherburne resident. The next one after that will regarding how medical marijuana is regulated and its dispensaries are regulated throughout the town of Sherburne. The advisory board has recommended favorable action on this. Okay, we have reached a quorum, so we'll be going to them live. Thank you for tuning in.
And begin tonight. Yeah, Ani told me, I'll get started. Anybody sit? If I could ask everyone please to take their seats and if those of you who are checking in in the back, if you could please do so quietly and then take your seats quietly, it will be most appreciated. I've been told that there is a quorum of 100 present and the second session of Sherburne's 237th Annual Town Meeting will now come to order. The town clerk has already sworn in the tellers, they are the same tellers tonight who served on Tuesday night. I will briefly give you the same reminders. If you can please keep the aisles and the stairs clear for safety reasons, turn off your phone, if you do want to make a call, please step outside the room. We have the visitor section in the back unless you are about to immediately make a presentation, then you may sit up in the front and if you do leave the room, the only authorized place to leave is at the rear, on my left, your right, and you should take your ballot with you, drop it off with the tellers, and if you should come back into the hall, they will give you your ballot back. And once again, if you need an assistive hearing device, you can find one, Pat Cassell is in the cross aisle in the back and she will sign one out for you. First, I'd like to congratulate you all on coming back for a second session and I will not go through the introductions again, but simply remind you that the advisory committee is seated here and on this side we have town council, town clerk, the board of selectmen, the town administrator, and the assistant town administrator. As we had the other night, there are two microphones in the room, one is in the center cross aisle and the other one is here down front. If you wish to speak during the evening, do not wait to be recognized from your seat, but go and directly and line up at the mic, it will save time, and then wait for the moderator to recognize you and always begin with your name and address and particularly those of you in the back, because the lights are shining in our face, we in the front can't always see who you are, but so if I simply say next person, I hope you won't be offended. Please remember that the mics are direct line mics and you must speak clearly and directly into the mic. Facing the mic and turning like this does you no good. I remind you again that you must limit your comments to two minutes. Given the number of expected speakers tonight, you will only have one opportunity to speak and I recommend that you thoughtfully consider your comments so that they are clear, succinct, and civil. Your time is up when the timekeeper raises the red card. I will stop you and better yet, stop yourself. I noticed that there were some questions raised Tuesday night which could have been answered by a good reading of the warrant and the advisory report. I hope you brought yours with you and I always recommend that you read your report. I will explain procedures as we go along. Each item of business will begin with the announcement of the article, followed by a motion by the advisory committee or the signatory concerning the article. Then we'll have presentations, then we'll have debate, and finally we'll have the vote. Always keep in mind that any seven voters may ask for a hand count that's holding up the colored cards to confirm a previous call of a voice vote and that any 50 voters may ask on any question for a paper ballot. There's undoubtedly some anxiety in the room this evening and I urge us, as I did last night, to remember that we share the same small town as neighbors and friends in one community. We'll agree, we'll disagree, but let's dig deep tonight to show the civility and respect for others that we all desire to be showed to ourselves. We'll all come out the other side of this in one piece, I promise. So let's begin tonight's business. I have people standing at the mics, do you wish to say anything?
Just to speak to the next article.
Okay, to speak to the next article? Yes.
John Hargrave, 49 Rockwood Street. I've noticed that the first person to speak at these meetings often sets the tone, so let me start off tonight with a compliment and say whoever up there wrote the annual report, you did a really nice job on the report, especially the beginning part. You took a lot of disparate data and you actually told a story. It's an interesting narrative that made me actually want to come tonight and get involved, so thank you for what is certainly a difficult and little recognized task.
Okay. We'll begin with article 24, the Wetlands Bylaw Amendment.
Madam Moderator?
Ms. Cantorski?
I move that no action be taken.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that no action be taken. Is there discussion? Yes, in the rear.
Yes. Michael Less of 54 Forest Street and the Conservation Commissioner. The bylaw change that we proposed was to match the state levels of notification about hearings in order to lessen the burden on and the expense for applicants, but we have since found a change in our procedures where we can achieve the notification without any additional cost for the applicant, therefore the change is no longer an issue.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? If not, we're beginning the evening with a motion to take no action. If you are in favor of taking no action on this, you are going to vote yes. If you are opposed to taking no action, you're going to vote no. And if, little rule of thumb, I've been thinking about this since last night, if you actually agree with the action of the article and you want to enact it and you're opposed to the advisory committee motion, you're going to vote exactly the opposite you would think you'd vote. You're going to vote no on the motion to take no action and then consequently, if there's a positive motion, you'll vote yes. Everybody got that? There's a motion to take no action, which means nothing's going to happen if this passes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion passes unanimously. Article 25, it's the Registered Marijuana Dispensaries Bylaw.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Pollak.
I move that the town vote to amend its zoning bylaws by deleting section 4.7 and replacing it with a new section 4.7 as printed in the 2014 Town Meeting Warrant with the following change. In section 4.7.6.1, delete the words "planning board?" comma, or ZBA, or BOS with "site plan review by PB" and replace with the words quote "planning board" close quote, so that section 4.7.6.1 will read as follows. "A RMD shall only be allowed by special permit from the Sherburne Planning Board in accordance with General Law Chapter 40A, Section 9, subject to the following statements, regulations, requirements, conditions, and limitations, and by adding a new subsection 33 to section 3.2 Schedule of Use Regulations and new line 33 to the Table of Use Regulations as printed in the 2014 Town Meeting Warrant."
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. We'll begin with the report from the planning board.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This article is about medical marijuana and the state law that's passed, the state law that passed allows medical marijuana facilities in 35, up to 35 locations, registered marijuana dispensaries and the process that it's gone through, we had a moratorium that we voted on last year that's set to expire on June 30th of this year, so to control where registered marijuana dispensary might be located in Sherburne, we've come up with a, this article proposes a solution. If we don't adopt this, then it could go anywhere in town. So far, the state has awarded, in January, they awarded 20 applications and there's another 10 that were expected at that time. They limit it to not more than five per county and there must be one in each county and there's four so far in the middle six county. So it's very unlikely that a dispensary would be located in Sherburne, but again, if we don't do anything, then it could be located anywhere in town. So what this does is, this article treats an RMD as a business and locates it in Business General District with a 500-foot restriction and that means that it can't be within 500 feet of a school or a playground and it also restricts the size of the facility. So by amending this, I'll go to the next slide that shows where our Business General locations are and just to orient, I think I can point out, yeah, to orient us, this is the split, so this is the Business General which is where the Sitco is and where, right at the split, and then the other main Business General is up in the northern part of the center and then there's one more small Business General location on Kendall Avenue by Sunshine Farm. So those are the locations and you can see the blue line is the buffer zone that is the 500-foot zone, so it limits where a facility could be located in town. And I think this is really a case, if we pass this, then we have some control over where it might be located, the size, and I guess there's also, so there's an amendment here to confirm that the permitting authority is the planning board. I guess I'll ask the moderator on the process to submit an amendment. In the article, as it appears, in article 25, I can get rid of this, so you can come up. So in article 25, it's in our warrant on page 29, 4.7.6.1, it says "an RMD shall only be allowed by special permit from the Sherburne Planning Board?" or ZBA, or Board of Selectmen with "site plan review by the Board of Selectmen." And we talked with the other boards, the planning board talked with the selectmen and the zoning board and agreed that the planning board would be the permitting authority, so I'll propose an amendment.
That actual change was incorporated in the motion that was made by the advisory committee, so an amendment is not necessary.
Then I won't.
Okay.
Fine. And then I guess the other thing that was mentioned in the printed warrant article was, was, oh, was the idea of delaying the implementation of article 25 until the more, until it's approved and I think that also was eliminated from the proposal, so thank you, I'll stop.
Thank you. Oh, I'm, thank you, not for stopping, but thank you. Is there any discussion on this?
Who was the speaker?
I beg your pardon?
Who was the speaker?
John Higley representing the planning board? Any other discussion, questions, comments? If not, we'll proceed directly to the vote. This will require a two-thirds vote, so as close as we can come to a unanimous, oh, there is a speaker? Okay.
Elliot Taylor, 30 North Main. I wonder how many people on the planning board and the selectmen of the advisory committee live in this area where a clinic could be established? Are there any that live in the areas where this could be established?
Is that a rhetorical question or are you?
I'm asking a question, how many people here on these boards who came up with this proposal live in the area where a clinic could be established? I guess I'm about the only one that lives in that area. Thank you.
There any other comments or questions? I guess John's going to take a shot at it.
John Higley, 14 Saddlebrook Road. On the planning board, I don't believe there are any members that live in Business General.
Thank you. If there's no further comment, we'll go to the vote. This requires the two-thirds, as I was saying, so as close as we can come to unanimous voice vote, it will be cleaner. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The motion passes. Article 26.
Madam Moderator?
Yes. Ms. Wolf.
I move that the town vote to amend section 1.3 Basic Requirements of its zoning bylaws as printed in the 2014 Town Meeting Warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there a report from the planning board? This is Chairman John Higley.
John Higley, 14 Saddlebrook Road. Article 26 adds lighting and so what I'm showing in this slide is that it just adds lighting to these other environmental parameters, so it enables the building inspector to have the authority to manage a lighting problem the way he does with other environmental parameters. The idea is that without it being specified in the zoning bylaw, the next step someone has is, with a grievance, is to take it, take someone to court, so this obviates that and another aspect of this is that because it's a modification to the, it's an amendment to the zoning, existing conditions would not be, would be grandfathered in or wouldn't be impacted, but this, this just enables lighting to be considered one of the other environmental parameters. A concern that was brought up was, was it would be nice to have, to enable the building inspector to have a method of measurement that would be specific and simple. Unfortunately, we don't have that with the other parameters either, so we feel that this is better to just add it and enable it to be used as the others are.
Is there any discussion on this? If not, this also requires a two-thirds vote, as close as we can come to unanimous will be helpful. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Article 27 is the Flood Plain District.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Williams.
I move that the town vote to amend its zoning bylaws by amending section 5.5 by deleting subsection 5.5.3 and replacing it with a new subsection 5.5.3 and adding new subsections 5.5.4, 5.5.5, and 5.5.6 as printed in the 2014 Town Meeting Warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there a report from the planning board?
Gino Calucci, Town Planner, to present the planning board report. The background on this is the original floodplain maps nationwide were done in the 70s and 80s. In 2010, FEMA updated the maps for Middlesex County, which we adopted at that point, for all of Middlesex County, we adopted the Sherburne section. Those updates were basically, they digitized the old maps and placed them on top of aerial photographs. In this year, they used engineering studies to update the maps for Sudbury Basin, not Middlesex County. Only the northern portion of Sherburne is in the Sudbury Basin, but so now we need to adopt the new maps and I think the relevant point here is that the maps will be in effect in July, whether we adopt them or not, but by adopting them, it makes Sherburne residents eligible to purchase federal flood insurance. If we do not adopt them, Sherburne will no longer be part of the federal flood insurance program and not have that option available. The planning board recommendation is adopt this bylaw.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion? If not, this is another two-thirds issue. We'll come as close to a unanimous voice vote as we can. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Article 28, Free Cash.
Ms. Moderator?
Ms. Wolf.
I move that no action be taken.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that no action be taken. Is there any discussion? If not, this is a simple majority for passage. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Article 29, the Stabilization Fund.
Ms. Moderator?
Mr. Rudin.
I move that $50,000 be transferred to the General Stabilization Fund from free cash in the treasury.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, this requires a two-thirds vote. We'll come as close to a unanimous voice vote as possible. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Article 30, Transfer to the OPEB Stabilization Fund.
I move that no action be taken.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, this is a simple majority for passage. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Article 31, Transfer to OPEB Liability Trust Fund.
Madam Moderator?
Ms. Relis?
I move that $200,000 be transferred from the town's other post-employment benefit, OPEB Stabilization Fund, to the OPEB Liability Trust Fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, this requires a two-thirds vote for passage. We'll come as close to a unanimous voice vote as we can. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Article 32. This is a citizens petition requesting a zoning change. And this is a unique situation. Ordinarily, our authorizing motions come from the Advisory Committee, our initiating motions, but at the advisory hearing, the committee voted four to four, had a tie vote, so it has no recommendation, so it is unable to come forward with a motion. That means that making the initiating motion devolves to one of the petitioners, one of the signatories of the citizens petition. So is one of the signatories present to make the initiating motion?
Tom Hunt, 26 Peckham Hill Road. Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Hunt.
I move that the town vote to rezone from Resident District B to Residence District EA, the land located at 90 Maple Street, assessors Map 6, Lot 66, and Map 7, Lot 2, and grant preliminary development plan approval pursuant to Section 5.6.3 of the zoning bylaw, so as to permit the development of over 55 housing on said land as detailed in the preliminary development plan presented at town meeting, or any amendment approved at town meeting.
We have the main motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We'll move, here's, we'll move through the order. We will have first a rep, report from the Planning Board, and then we will have a report from the Town Revenue Enhancement Committee. Then we'll move to have a presentation made by the proponents of this article, and we will then have a presentation made by the opponents of the article, and after that, we will open the mics for our general debate. So we'll begin with the Planning Board report.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. For a long time, Sherburne has recognized the need for housing for seniors and for more affordable housing. This bylaw was added in 1979 and revised in 2008, and I'd like to review the purposes and the, the Planning Board's position and the process. So the purposes of the zoning bylaw, and residential B is two-acre residential zoning, EA zoning bylaw, I'll describe, it, it's designed to provide these four basic things, to provide for elderly or affordable housing, to enable flexible land development, for, to include conservation of, of open space, and the EA zoning request must be made, must include a preliminary development plan and be presented, that's what's going on now. So it has to do that, because that preliminary development plan then plays a very important role as the, as the project would progress. And then the fourth thing is that it requires the detailed final development plan and a special permit to adhere to what is presented. So the, the process, where we are now, the process is, is first, most of, as I said, most of Sherburne is zoned residential one, two, or three acres, and EA zoning is available, but no land is zoned EA in advance. EA zoning can only be obtained by submitting an Article to town meeting for rezoning with the preliminary development plan. So the steps, the steps that have, have happened so far where we are in this process is the developer conducted tests, developed a concept plan, met with boards and committees for input, and then an initial proposal was presented to the Board of Selectmen for inclusion on this warrant, and in this case, it was by the landowner. Whoops, sorry. The next thing is that the Planning Board and Advisory Committee both held hearings on the warrant article and the preliminary development plan. The Planning Board has a report by, that's required by law, on that preliminary development plan. So I'll read that, I'll read this report. The Planning Board held a hearing on Article 32 EA zoning and preliminary development plan on February 26th, which continued to March 26th, and was completed on April 2nd. In accordance with zoning bylaw 5.6.3, the Planning Board found the proponent prepared and presented sufficient data to give reasonable assurance that the development will conform to the preliminary development plan with respect to the location, layout, and design of proposed buildings, drives, and streets, to the density, type, and design of floor plans and dwelling units, and to the other material which the proponent has submitted with his proposal. So the next steps are, here we are, annual town meeting, where a two-thirds vote is required for a rezoning, and then if it passes, then the, if it passes, then the developer prepares a final development plan and applies for a special permit. The, the town may include peer review studies and opinions contracted by the town. Conservation Commission and Board of Health review the final development plan and special permit application, and make recommendations to the Planning Board, which then holds a hearing on the final development plan and the special permit application. The final development plan includes a survey, site development plan, architectural plans, statistics, and the developer financial information. This is all in great detail, includes things like landscaping, pavement, drainage, floor area, percent open space. That's what's required in the final development plan. The special permit requirements are that the Planning Board hold a public hearing within 65 days after the filing, that the considerations include impact on town services and facilities, capability, or sorry, compatibility with the surrounding area and consistency of the proposed development with the town's long-range planning objectives, and, and includes all these criteria. The Planning Board approval requirements are that the development must be consistent with what is approved at town meeting here, the Planning Board rules and regulations, and the EA purpose. It has to meet the requirements of the final development plan and the special permit requirements that are in the zoning bylaw. There can be no increase in the dwell, in the dwelling unit density or the number of homes. No floor area increase can increase greater than 10%. And then the, the Planning Board may require a dwelling unit density to be less than the preliminary development plan, as a result of the studies and opinions and, and that And the Planning Board approval requirements are that we may impose additional conditions to safeguard public safety, welfare, and convenience, and may amend a special permit only in accordance with existing standards, and a new public hearing is required if there's minor revisions. To deny it requires it, that it does not meet, it fails to meet the requirements, or that it's not consistent with the purposes of EA zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Good. Yes, is there a report from the Revenue Development Committee?
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
My name is, my name is John Edgar. I'm chairman of the Revenue Development Committee, and I would like to give you a little background, give the folks a little background. The Board of Selectmen appointed our committee in October of 2011, and I'm going to read the charge that the Selectmen gave us. The Board of Selectmen hereby forms a Financial Levitation Committee to consist of five unpaid volunteer members to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen. The purpose of the committee is to study revenue enhancement ideas or development opportunities with the goal of raising revenue, so as to lessen the residential real estate tax burden. The committee shall report its recommendations to the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen shall discuss and vote to whether, to support such recommendations, and an action plan to provide the most realistic chance for implementation. We have done that in July of this past year. We reported to the Selectmen. Obviously, when we were appointed, the Selectmen were aware of the increased need for revenue. When our committee got to work, we found, we learned several interesting facts that I'd like to share. Our committee went to work, we found that the number of homes in Sherburne over the past 20 years has increased by an average of a half, one-half of a house per year. The other thing, the other thing we found startling was that 47% of the land in Sherburne is no-tax or reduced-tax category. A reduced-tax category means that the tax on the land is reduced by 75%. The tax on this 90-acre parcel that we are talking about tonight is $14,000. Sherburne's rural, trademark rural characteristic is desirable, but it is expensive. Looking at the Maple Street project, it is clear that we will trade approximately 30 acres of land for homes that will pay real estate taxes in excess of $700,000 or more annually to the town. The remaining approximately 60 acres of woods and trails will be placed in a category for walkers and equestrians forever. That does not hold true in the category that it currently is, is held in, which is 61B. There is no reason why growth and rural character cannot coexist. Thank you very much.
We'll then go to the two, we have two five-minute presentations, one by the proponents and then one by the opponents, and we'll begin with the proponents. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Sheila Presley-Han, Russet Hill Road. I am the chairman of the Board for the Council on Aging. Upon hearing about this project in September, our board invited Pulte Homes to present their plan at our October meeting. After thorough research, which included a site visit to two, to their Bedford and Acton developments, our board voted unanimously in Mark to support this project on Maple Street. Pulte has listened to our concerns and have made many changes. They will make this a community which we'd all like to have in our town. That being said, I'd like to introduce Mark Mastriani from Pulte Homes, who will give the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila, and thank you to the entire Council on Aging for your overwhelming support through this process. For the record, my name is Mark Mastriani, and I'm here with two senior associates from my company, Pulte Homes of New England. Reed Blue is here with me tonight, and also Mark Camo. We're a, we're a local home-building company, for those of you who don't know, based out of, 25 minutes down the street, in, out of Westboro, Massachusetts. We have significant building experience in this Massachusetts, eastern Massachusetts area. And since two, the year 2000, we have 33 completed, or in process of completing, residential developments in this area since 2000, totaling 4,300 homes. And just last year, in the year 2013, Pulte Homes of New England, my company, we sold enclosed over 450 homes last year in eastern Massachusetts. We're a financially stable company, we're self-financed, we don't require any outside lending. Our parent company is Pulte Group, ended the year in 2013 with $1.6 billion in cash in the bank. We're a publicly traded company on the New York Stock Exchange under the symbol PHM. And the reason I mention this is that we, we have a very strong cash position, and the reason for mentioning that is, that allows us to complete all of our developments on time regardless of the economy. We've been building here consistently and continuously through the good and the bad times. You can find us more information on our company online at www.pulte.com. So the reason we're here tonight is our request to rezone the land at 90 Maple Street to Resident EA. And what will that do? That will provide us an opportunity to provide the town of Sherburne a senior housing development. A development will provide additional housing options for seniors who want to sell their existing home and stay in Sherburne. You won't be forced to leave your doctors, your friends, your community, the things that you have grown to love of your town for decades. Senior housing communities offer the same comforts as your current home without the stress of physically demanding home maintenance activities, snow removal, lawn care, painting, all, all the activities of your big, single-family house that you no longer want to do. Your town's own community development plan clearly specifies that one of the town's housing goals is to encourage additional development of senior housing, and that's what our proposal is here today. And, and just to follow up with, with the Planning Board Chairman mentioned, it, it was a requirement of the zoning to provide a preliminary development plan, which we have done successfully, but it should be noted that this is not a final development plan. If we were to be successful here tonight with the rezoning, the next steps will force us, or make us come back to the town with a final detailed plan, and we have to go through the, the local rules and regulations of your Planning Board, your Conservation Commission, and the Board of Health. And that's when all of the concerns that people have can be better addressed at that The senior housing proposal offers significant physical benefit. The proposed development is a privately owned and maintained condominium with minimal service costs to the town. It'll have private, the, the homeowners will privately own and maintain the sewer and water infrastructure. They'll take care of the trash collection privately. There'll be private roadway maintenance, private snow landscaping services. There is very, very little cost to the town with one of these projects. John Connery of Connery Associates provided a fiscal impact analysis to the town. Using an average home value of $650,000, he projected a net annual fiscal benefit of approximately $762,000 annually per year to the town, and that's sustainable for the long term. There will be zero additional cost to the school system. We can all argue over what the right value of the homes is. We've, we've heard that comment for months, but, but regardless, it's a well-known fact that senior housing communities offer towns significant revenue without typical school and service expenditure, expenditure. That is, that is unarguable. This is a overview site plan of the preliminary development plan, and I'll just go through some of the highlights. We're proposing 66 homes on 88 acres of land. That's a density of 0.75 units per acre, or, or less than one unit per acre. Zoning allows four units per acre.
Excuse me, we've, we've hit the five minutes, if you could wrap it up.
I can wrap it up.
Thank you.
These are, these are age-restricted homes, which requires one person to be age 55 years of age or older. And in addition to that, we've committed to an additional restriction in writing to the Planning Board that, that restricts permanent residents under the age of 18 from living here to address school kid concerns. There's a proposed mix of attached and detached homes ranging from 1,500 to 2,700 square feet, and we've revised the plan to include attached homes in a wider range size of homes to address Council on Aging concerns. And most significantly, the plan was revised to provide significant wooded buffers to abutters. The proposal has almost no visual, visual impact on neighboring properties. The proposal provides more than 60% of open space.
No, excuse me.
Yep.
I'm sorry. It was a five-minute presentation.
Okay.
And I'm sorry we've come to the end.
And the trails will remain public. For continued use. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, I believe Harley, Mr. Kaplan wanted to represent the opponents in a presentation.
I'm actually going to speak in the direction of the residents of the town, if that's okay.
That's fine.
Great, thank you. Based upon a town report, oh, excuse me, I'm Harley Kaplan, 68 Maple Street.
And remember to speak directly into the mic.
Based upon a town report written on October 10th, 2013, about half of Sherburne households are on a fixed income. The vast majority are elderly. Based upon a report written on December 11th, 2011 by Savar Sherburne, out of the 25 surrounding towns, we have the fourth highest percentage of children, 236 kids per 1,000 residents, 14% higher than the other towns. Should Article 32 pass, one of our most valuable population, our elderly population, both present and future, will be the biggest losers. Forst- Forced to pay high real estate taxes, what options will be available to them? The town needs more affordable and moderately-priced housing, and this project will hurt our chances of meeting that goal. Considering the amount of high-priced elderly housing coming on the market over the next few years in Sherburne, what incentive will developers have in building affordable and moderately-priced elderly housing if they could not sell the more profitable, higher-priced housing as well? We will have a glut of high-priced elderly housing when what we need most is lower and moderately-priced elderly housing. Don't hurt the elderly by supporting this project, because they're the ones, they're the ones who are going to need the prop, to live in Sherburne, and they'll have no place to go. This project will not generate the cash windfill, windfall Pulte has talked about. Let's just take one statistic, and there's many of them. Several of our town residents have expressed an interest in moving into this project. If less than twenty-five percent or sixteen of the sixty-six units go to Sherburne residents, what happens to the homes they are selling? Most likely, families will buy them, and with the additional two-point-three-seven children per family, or approximately thirty-seven kids, the town pays twenty thousand dollars an average for each child's education, that big Pulte revenue has now evaporated. This project will not be profitable for the town. I've heard from residents that our school population is going down. Considering the units now being built and the unpredictable population changes, that could change rapidly. On Wednesday, the residents of this town has learned on how just a few students have made a big difference on our town expenses. Can you imagine what thirty-seven kids can do? Future developers will not be building affordable and moderately-priced elderly housing, which we need in this town, but family-oriented housing, which will increase our town expenses. The net result is we all lose. For those who are interested in selling their homes over the next three to seven years, this project has the potential to reduce sales prices by oversupplying the market. Remember, there are Whitney Farms and Abbey Road housing coming online. This project can reduce prices by five to ten percent at the very least. I've spoken with many people who think by controlling this project, we can avoid a forty-B. This could not be further from the truth. Forty-B is a real pressing issue facing Sherburne today. We are currently short a hundred and nine units to meet the ten percent state mandate of affordable housing, and this project adds seven more units to that number. Developers are praying we change our zoning laws for this project and open the floodgate to Sherburne development. Under current, forty-B developers can increase our housing stock by seven hundred units, a fifty percent increase in our housing stock just to meet the state mandate. Let's not forget the environmental impact this proposed project is to be built on the Coors Brook watershed, one of Sherburne's most important water resources. Pulte's record on environmental issue is a major concern, cause for concern, and the U.S. government has sued Pulte in many states for groundwater contamination. And the amount of blasting Pulte needs to do on that property is going to affect all the neighbors. The traffic generated is going to be immense. These residents need to drive to get anywhere. There are no sidewalks, and quite frankly, how many people under the age of sixty-five do you know who are not working? This property is for fifty-five and up. For the first time in years, Sherburne has a real opportunity to make substantial changes in our revenue. The state of Massachusetts has just approved a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar bill to reimburse towns directly to help develop their water and sewer resources. By approving the Pulte rezoning change, we will be giving up a major opportunity to generate real revenue for this town. Based upon my estimates, we will forfeit between two to six million dollars of annual revenue, as well as the ability to meet our state requirements for affordable housing and the ability to maintain our rural character. I have heard people say we need to build, 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 but that's, but that's not what I came to Sherburne for. What these people are really saying is our taxes are too high.
Excuse me, Mr. Kaplan, couldn't you wrap it up?
Yes, if I may have the same courtesy as the proponents have, I just have one minute left, please.
Yes.
We need, what the, when people say they need to build, 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 what they're really saying is that the taxes are too high. We need to listen. This town is in financial distress with the second-highest tax rates in the state. Some people can't wait to sell. We need to do something, but we do, but do we let developers dictate the terms, or do we control our own destiny? In conclusion, Sherburne is the last of the New England towns. Between two major population centers, this town has the lowest density of any town between New York and the Canadian border. And this legacy has cost us in high taxes, but we have an opportunity to control our fate, but it's going to require hard work and sacrifices. But on a long journey, you must take the first step. Once we let Pulte in, it is the same as letting the fox into the hen house. The question before us is really about the future of Sherburne.
Excuse me, could you wrap it up, please?
I will, thank you. In my opinion, this town is a treasure. It would be sad not to be able to share it with our future generations. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to begin with the debate, and I remind you to limit yourselves to two minutes, and I doubt that we will have the opportunity to make a second round, so think carefully about what you'd like to say. Yes, and I'm sorry, I do recognize Bob Delaney. Thank you very much. Bob?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Bob Delaney, forty-six Pleasant Street. My pencil got dull, unfortunately, as I was trying to make notes about the misinformation that was just passed along to us, but I did make a few notes. The cost of twenty thousand dollars per student in Sherburne, that sounds very, very much out of line. I think if there is a member of the school committee here, they might like to make a comment about that statement, and it's just mind-boggling how much misinformation there was. And, you know, if we, it, changing the zoning law here tonight won't have any impact on whether we have a forty-B or a not. We're much better off with the proposal that has been made by Pulte, and we will have impact, they will have to obey our rules and regulations. The, the impact from, from forty-B zoning is, as, as we will find out, if, if we don't approve this tonight, I think, well, we already have one forty-B on Whitney Street. I mean, they could, alone could produce a hundred students easily within a few years. A forty-B here could produce lots more. That is a huge negative, and I think it would be a mistake to turn down the offer from the developer, Pulte, and I would strongly recommend that we work with the developer who is willing to work with us, and we will all be better off for it. Thank you.
Could I ask everyone to hold their applause, please? I, I know you want to, but we want to have everybody have an opportunity to speak. Yes, could you identify yourself, please?
Yeah, my name is Tom Oberst. I live at, right up to me, I live at twenty-seven Snow Street in Sherburne. Been a resident of Sherburne for thirty-five years, have had four children go through at least in part Pine Hill, the middle school and the, the high school. The question I want to raise before all of us is, is do we really need new revenue? Let me explain. We, we all know that seventy percent of our tax dollars go to our schools. Not too long ago, Dover Sherburne High School had a single headmaster, not a headmaster and an assistant headmaster. The district had one superintendent, not an additional assistant superintendent.
Excuse me, Mr. Oberst, if I might interrupt you. We're really debating the, the zoning article, Article thirty-two.
The zoning article is based on the argument that we need more revenue, and I'm trying to point out that we, I'm trying to answer that question.
Could you, could you make the point quite narrowly, please? Don't, don't stray.
I, I, I will. The, the point I'm trying to make is, there is, there has been little to no growth in the town and the school population since nineteen sixty. And one of the things that's occurring is that technology is changing education and dramatically, and it's a solution to our budget problems. Today, through EdX, you can take a course taught by Harvard College faculty online for nothing. These are being taught by the same teachers that teach undergraduate courses at Harvard College. The program has been extended to include other courses as well. The bottom line here is, is that we can take advantage of this technology at our school and dramatically lower costs and, dramatically lower costs and improve the education process of our school. And we can save in the process, if my calculations are correct, eight-hundred thousand dollars a year taken out, and the same amount that we believe we will generate from zoning laws change. And, and that, that is the, the point I'm, I would like to, like to make. Dramatically, education is changing the world. The more advanced and progressive and better high schools are taking advantage of it. In the process, they're dramatically lowering their cost, and they're also dramatically improving the selection of courses that are offered. And so, that's my point. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Next.
Excuse me, Paul Leach, thirty-two, thirty-two Peckham Hill Road. I'm a senior, and I am looking forward to getting rid of all this housework and the woodpeckers and the deer and getting into a community that the neighbors are close by. The Pulte people have listened to amenities suggested by Tom Ernsting. They have revert, reworked some of their access or the emergency access road. If you've been to Bedford or Acton, this is a Sherburne-friendly, unobtrusive device. This is a watershed experience in my, a watershed vote, in my view. Sherburne can sink or swim, and I'm afraid if we vote this down, we're going to sink further into neighboring towns whose houses are selling much better than ours and school systems, what I suspect are getting a little better, so that competitive advantage may be decreasing. Thank you very much.
Will, come down in front. Would you like to speak, sir?
Joe Cartidi, thirty-three Woodland Street. I'm looking for a clarification. It seems to me that if this worked out in what's described as the ideal way, that many Sherburne seniors would give up their current houses and simply move to this development, wouldn't that put sixty or so houses on the market that would most likely be bought by younger people with children? And wouldn't that, wouldn't those people need another school or a bigger school or something like that? I must be confused, because the only way this could work, I would think, is if those houses that became available were bought by new seniors that were just dying to move into Sherburne and, you know, cut the lawn, so. So I need a clarification. Thank you.
In the rear. I'm, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Is this on?
Yes, now it is.
Okay. I'm Marion Neutra, twenty-five Prospect Street. I want to point out that this property is a beautiful forest that covers the whole east side of, of Bear Hill. And the slope is important because water runs down through the forest floor to form the huge wetland at the base. And this wetland, as has been mentioned, is the headwaters of Coors Brook that flows into the Sudbury River. Now, we know this property will be sold, and it will be developed. But a responsible developer who really cares about the landscape of Sherburne could develop smaller cluster housing placed strategically on this land so as to minimize damage to the forest and wetlands and still generate revenue for the town. But Pulte's plan is to simply clear-cut a swath across the entire hillside, long enough and wide enough to hold thirty-three houses and a road down the, a street down the middle. Water is still going to flow downhill, but now it's going to flow over compacted soil, pavement, steep grades, picking up pollutants and silt as it goes. And this water will eventually, like the water from the stormwater basins and the massive septic system required for sixty-six houses, will end up eventually in the wetland. Now, our conservation commission, I know will do their job, but all they can do is enforce wetland setback laws and conditions during construction. Pulte Homes, Pulte Homes National, I should say, based in Michigan, has a reputation and a track record of polluting waterways despite such regulations. They simply pay the fines and, and legal settlements, and that's part of their doing business. And they'll still leave town with millions.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay. And they'll leave us with damage that can't simply be undone. Thank you.
Yes, in the rear.
Tom Armston, seventy-nine Hollis Street. If we turn down this proposal to change the zoning, I see three outcomes. One is that Pulte walks away. I give that fifteen percent.
Excuse me.
Number two would be that they choose to renegotiate with the town, recast the project. I would give that a twenty-five percent. And three would be, again, if this is turned down, that they go to a forty-B project. So the question for, and what I don't know is, at this point, whether the town has any interest in exercising its option to its right of first refusal under the regulations of sixty-one B. So the option for, the, the question for us in town is, do, are the shortcomings in the Pulte project having to do with the large size, the distance from town, and thirdly, the lack of low price points for affordable price points for some of the seniors in town? Do those perceived shortcomings, are they outweighed by the financial advantage of, of taxes that are, that a large part of which go to the bottom line without any school costs, plus any mitigation fee? And in the end, after weighing everything, I, I come out to the position that those shortcomings are not outweighed by the financial advantages.
Good evening. Peter Black, fifty-five Maple Street. Normally, when one goes into something like this, they do something called due diligence. They investigate the people involved, and the people involved is Pulte. Now, I don't know anything about Pulte, but I looked at some cases that are reported, the public record. Grafton is suing Pulte for eight million dollars or more in profits that were improperly withheld from the town on a forty-B project. Now, what's that based on? The inspector general of Massachusetts, whose duty is to inspide and prevent fraud, investigated this project and wrote a, wrote a report that's available online, and what they said is, Pulte miscalculated their cost, they, they padded their expenses, putting things on the record where there were no payments, but they showed an expense, and the, and, I'm sorry, Pulte Home was sued. Now, we were told Pulte Homes is a local company. In fact, Pulte is a foreign company. They were sued in state court, and the case was removed to federal court. If anything goes wrong in this project and we sue Pulte Home, we're going to be in federal district court, and it's going to be a much more expensive suit. Pulte was also sued by a people named Smirley. It's a Georgia case, and Pulte was sued and found liable for violating the Clean Water Act and the Georgia statutes. Pulte was ordered to pay two-and-a-half million dollars or just under. However, what's really important, in that case, Pulte had been found to have destroyed evidence. This is called spoliation. The court ordered Pulte pay, to pay four-hundred thousand dollars in attorney's fees and costs in that case for doing that.
Peter, I'm sorry, your time is up. Peter, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Could I have a?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, your time is up.
Well, there are other cases where Polte was found to have violated a number of these fees.
Excuse me. Mr. Black, would you take your seat, please? In the rear.
Jean Rosso, 159 Nason Hill Road. I've lived in Sherburne for 50 years and have been associated with the assessors office for Benny of those years. Sherburne's tax base has shown little growth compared to Dover's. In the last five years, Sherburne's new growth was 42 million compared to Dover's new growth of 156 million. With our tax rate of $20.34 per thousand, we are rapidly approaching the state mandated limit of $25 per thousand. Clearly, Sherburne needs to broaden its tax base without increasing its expenditures. Being a senior citizen, it's also clear we need alternative housing options for downsizing. The Polte over-55 housing development will help solve both of those issues. It has been said by the opponents that the financial benefits outlined by Polte for the development are speculative and uncertain. The fact is, Polte hired Connery and Associates, an independent economic development firm, who, working together with the town of Sherburne, has provided a financial analysis of the project. Together, their findings were, they would be an approximate net revenue to the town of $762,000 per year. This figure was arrived at from an estimated average of $600,000 cost per unit, times our tax rate, minus the cost to the town of police and fire department services. No other town services, such as snow removal or road maintenance, would be incurred, as these would come under the homeowner's condo fees. The town would also receive additional revenue from the numerous permitting fees required for the project. If we do not approve this zoning change, we will most likely be dealing with another 40B project, meaning no town control, no senior housing, more units, and increased annual expenses, especially for increased school costs. Thank you for listening.
Yes. Down in front.
Joanne Wong, 129 Maple Street. Please vote no on Article 32. One of the reasons to favor this project comes from a general survey done in 2012. The survey was a good one, as a large number of the town residents responded, and most likely many are here tonight. The first question on the survey was, would you be interested in over-55 living community in Sherburne? And 71% answered yes. So with that in mind, it's not surprising that there are many, including myself, who favor the concept. But the critical question here tonight is, do we favor this specific project? Looking at the survey, there are three additional questions that clearly indicate that the project before you tonight is not the right project. Additionally asked were, do you prefer living near the town center? 62% of the older respondents in the survey said yes. The proposed site on Maple Street with no sidewalks is dangerous for walking regardless of age, and so that's unacceptable. Another question was on amenities, and four were listed. 74% wanted assisted living. 63% wanted a health center. 62% a convenience store. And 76% a community room. Only one of these amenities, the community room, appears in the Polte proposal, and this was only done reluctantly. The last question was on price, with six ranges listed, from $450,000 to a little over $1 million. 67% checked the two lowest ranges. Therefore, the price average, the average projected price of $650,000 is either at the very top of someone's budget and, for most, actually is far above acceptable. Almost all of us here want to provide additional senior housing in Sherburne, but think before you vote tonight.
Excuse me.
Would you personally pay for a project that did not meet the basic needs?
Thank you. Yes. In the rear.
Peggy Novak, 36 Nason Hill Road. Like many of us here, I certainly support the idea of more senior housing in Sherburne, but this development falls far short of the intent and requirements of the EA zoning provisions of our bylaws. The bylaw states that any EA zone development should be, quote, "appropriately located within one mile of Washington and Main Street and should be readily accessible to shopping, transportation, and other public facilities and services used by the elderly." As Joanne said, the Council on Aging's own survey cited the importance of being close to the town center. But one mile from the split barely gets you to the edge of the property, and as we all know, Maple Street is certainly not walkable. Getting to town requires a car trip with a left-hand turn at one of the most difficult intersections in town. Polte's plan also violates the intent and requirements of the bylaw to, quote, "utilize natural features and leave the special environmental features of the site as undisturbed as possible." They plan to blast and dig away a large part of the side of Bear Hill along the entire length of the property to create a building envelope. They have said they will push large amounts of dirt and rock from above the buildings to below, creating steep embankments 12 to 24 feet high above and below, as well as a retaining wall about 200 feet long along one edge, and large stormwater retention basins. These are permanent features. They're not temporary scars from construction that will fade with time. Now, I'm not naive. I know something's going to happen with this land, but a development on this land doesn't have to be done this way. It's just the cheapest way. Polte doesn't care about Sherburne or Sherburne seniors. Their only goal is to maximize their profits. Many of us moved to Sherburne because we fell in love with its open space and rural character. As proposed, this development is too large, too dense, and too destructive. It simply doesn't fit Sherburne's character or its needs. We can do better, both for the town and for our seniors.
Yes, next, please.
Edie Steffick, 13 Lake Street. I'm opposed to a zoning change to allow the Polte Homes development on Maple Street. It would be setting a bad precedent to rezone for a developer, especially when the project does not satisfy the needs of the town. If housing is to be for the elderly, the cost of the housing cannot be higher than the elderly can afford. I'd like to see Sherburne do some serious planning and put a rational plan in place to determine where to put dense housing in Sherburne instead of taking our beautiful farms, as is happening now. Little by little, spaces are being filled in, and even though each one by themselves are not significant, taken as a whole, Sherburne will be changed significantly. The town of Lincoln has a low-cost housing development in its downtown area, and it is a well-done project that blends with the character of the town. I believe that they've fulfilled their 40B requirements while still preserving their beautiful, open spaces. We need to do the same in Sherburne so that we are not continually at the mercy of 40B. It is possible to have growth here and maintain our rural character at the same time. Please vote no to rezoning Maple Street. This is not the way to allow Sherburne to be developed.
Next, please.
Good evening. Doug Brody, 7 Curves Street. I want to address the 40B issue, which has been characterized as a threat by those who are opposed to this development. 40B is not a threat, it is a reality. 40B says that unless 20% of the town's housing stock is affordable, a developer can bypass all town regulations and instead comply with state regulations that are far more lenient than ours. Witness the 40B Whitney Farms project on Whitney Street. I'm sure you've seen the saturated condition of that site. Sherburne has not met the affordability threshold, and so the town is fair game for 40B developments. The catch for the 40B developer is that his profit is limited to 20%, unlike a standard development where the market regulates his profit. Given this fact, the 40B developer will do his utmost to maximize the number of units on his development site, pushing to the limit the less restrictive state regulations, resulting in a project over which the town has little control. The site off Maple Street on which Polte has presented a preliminary development plan can be vulnerable to such a development. If the rezoning passes, all relevant Sherburne boards will be involved with the project, assuring a development that will be in character with the town. It will offer first-class design and construction, the preservation of over 60% of the land laced with public accessible trails, and a much-needed fiscal benefit to the town of over $750,000 annually with zero additional cost to the school budget. However, if the rezoning is defeated tonight, the option for a 40B project is on the table. That will obviously be Polte's decision, or perhaps some other developers, if Polte decides to step aside. The prediction of some of the opponents that the Polte project is a trailer park for seniors may very well become a reality under 40B. A project with no town control, no regard for its neighbors, and one that will assuredly do little to encompass the character of Sherburne. So far, the most advantageous way forward is a market-based senior housing project, a project that the town will control throughout the approval process, assuring and attracting and enhancing development. Thank you.
Yes. Next, please.
Suzie Wheelwright, 137 Hunting Lane. Madam Moderator, I'd like to request a paper ballot, and I would also like my two minutes.
Have no concerns. We will have a paper ballot, I'm sure.
Thank you.
And your two minutes start now.
Thank you. I would like to remind this body that last year at this time, this town meeting, was very enthusiastically approving an EA for Abbey Road, which is an over-55 project. It gained easy approval, and I think the contrasts are striking. It was the right number, 16 units, in the right location, downtown, easy walk to everything that Sherburne has to offer downtown, and the right developer, a local developer with a good reputation and a good understanding of Sherburne's needs. The property at 90 Maple Street will be developed, but there are good developments and there are bad ones. There are better ways for the Gray family to get the value of their land, and none of us would deny them that value. I would mention once again the cluster zone. It's the same, it features, just briefly, the same number of houses that would be allowed in the present zone, which I believe is two acres. So it would be fewer houses than 66. All the Sherburne regulations apply, and it allows closer setbacks so that the houses are clustered and the open space and presumably most of the trails could also be retained. I would like to take issue with something that Mark from Polte said. He said that they, their projects were completed and on time, and I believe I heard him say at a planning board, I think it was either the planning board or the advisory hearing, that Legacy Place, which I believe went way slow during the downturn.
Excuse me, your time is up. Your two minutes are up.
Thank you. Please vote no on Article 32.
I'm going to take a couple more from the rear, and then I'll come back here. Yes, next.
Madam Moderator. I am Ted Wong of 129 Maple Street. I urge all citizens to vote no on Article 32. The oversized 66-unit Polte project requires a change in the historic zoning that characterized Sherburne. The project generates, or allegedly generates, significant revenue for Sherburne. This has not been independently verified by Sherburne's planning board or any other committee. Also, some of the environmental studies and well-water studies have not been verified. They've been submitted, but they're not verified, and I believe there's flaws in them. The Polte revenue projections are flawed on at least eight counts. The project should be compared to alternate projects, such as one that meets the current zoning or one that includes affordable housing. The site cannot support 66 units without a costly wastewater treatment plant. The well-water system will negatively impact the butters and will require remediation. Is there a demand for 66 senior housing units with minimal amenities selling for $650,000 with a projected $300 per month HOA fee? Over the last 20 years, Sherburne has added approximately 10 homes per year. Can Polte sell 22 new senior restricted units per year over the next three years? Polte's 1% for Sherburne's increased costs are low. It should be typically 2% to 3%. The Polte analysis does not include maintenance of existing roads, the additional impact on the recycle center burden, even though they're going to have private collection, I believe it still will go to our recycle center, added road congestion and accidents, et cetera. The one-time fees listed are for required permits and should not be construed as revenue generators. These fees are to offset actual costs for monitoring the project by Sherburne's officials. Student expenses will not.
Mr. Wong, I'm sorry, your two minutes are up, sir.
Okay. Anyway, I urge you to vote no on this rezoning of our special town. Thank you.
Next.
Rebecca Honeywell, Woodland Street. We've recently learned that the cost basis of our town is $25 million. If this proposed development increases the population of the town by only 3% because of the EA zoning, that's approximately $750,000. The increased tax revenues are only 600 to 650, which is less than the cost basis for the town. If the elderly, which we've heard a lot of recently, move into this new development, that opens up 3% of the town, or up to 3% of the town, for new families. This could potentially, because of the numbers, increase the population of the town by 6% from one zoning change tonight. Do we really want to change our zoning for a private entity who's famous for violating wetlands and local statutes? I think we should follow Benjamin Franklin's advice, which is to protect the land as the best investment because there isn't any more being made. Thank you.
Yes, Chris. Hi. Chris Winterfeld, 4 Old Orchard Road. I'd like to address the environment and wetlands issue. There are numerous state and local town laws with strict regulations that control the environmental effects of the wetlands. Every town development that has ever been built in Sherburne has had to abide by these laws. The majority of homes built in Sherburne in the last 50 years have involved cutting trees, grading, building retaining walls, and sometimes even blasting. Our town boards are continuously scrutinizing everything that happens in town and have permitted these processes and have exercised oversight. Any homeowner who wants to put in an addition, install a swimming pool, a tennis court, or build a new home goes through this process. This development by Polte is no exception. Our town has protected us in the past and will continue to protect us in the future. If the town agrees to give Polte the zoning change this evening, it does not mean they can build. It only means they can start the process of special permitting, permitting, which is the ultimate control of our environment and wetlands. Please vote yes on Article 32.
Next.
Hi. My name's Joseph Putnam, also known as Poe Putnam. I live at 3 Maple Street. I'd like to speak tonight as a resident of the street, as an architect, and as a developer. My main point is, I think that Sherburne can do a lot better than this. I've been doing senior housing since 1969, and of all levels, 40B, subsidized, very high-end, and this development strikes me as being too dense, too large, has an extremely long road ending in a cul-de-sac, and it's rather hazardous from a fire safety point of view. You know, there's a risk of the road being clogged. And as I look at the presentation, it just doesn't strike me as a good fit for Sherburne. And so I really think we can do a lot better than this, and this is not a question of either-or. The property is going to be developed, and other things can happen. It's a bad spot. When you do senior housing, you like to put them downtown, walking distance to amenities. So I really think we can do a lot better than this, and I urge everybody to vote no.
Yes, we'll move down here for the next comment.
Wesley Worth, 133 Western Avenue, Sherburne. I, too, am no stranger to development projects and design issues. I, too, am no stranger to development projects and design issues. I'm a landscape architect and a planner, and I agree with Poe that this could be done much better. While I share a lot of the concerns about 40B and other things looming in the future, I don't, I'm not convinced that choosing what I think is a bad fit for the town is going to solve those problems. I think it's another issue, and they shouldn't be mixed. And what I'd like to do, and very quickly do, is set out what I would consider a criteria for assessing a development program such as this. And the first thing I think about is zoning, which is why we're here. And changing zoning, or what I like to do is just think more about the spirit of the zoning, what it is about it. What zoning does is make the town guide, guides the way the town is developed and guides the criteria that we build to, so that we end up with something that is safe, decent, meets our, and meets our values. And I feel like this development of a road with houses stacked like sardines on either side is very different than anything we have here. And, and it doesn't meet, it, I don't think it's why any of us live in this town, or most of us live in this town. And I think that what I'd like to see is a developer that was willing to look at a site very carefully, look at the hydrologic features, look at the way the water is flowing, look at the environmental factors, what trees are growing, and come at that with an innovative design that uses what has become best practice design techniques and build...
Thank you.
And build things that are environmentally friendly and fit the criteria of what we would like to see. Thank you.
In the rear.
Christine Cooney, 55 Maple Street. Madam Moderator.
Could you speak directly into the mic? I don't think you can be heard.
Thank you. The advisory committee did not recommend favorable action on Article 32. In the warrant, following the text of Article 32 on page 36 are summaries of the positions of advisory members favoring the project and those opposed to it. At the conclusion of the opinions of those favoring the project is this statement. "A second option is that if the property comes out of its 61B designation in a sale to a developer, the town has right of first refusal to buy the land or designate a nonprofit to acquire it. While the town cannot afford to simply purchase the land, other development arrangements through the nonprofit might benefit the town in terms of meeting some of its desired goals of more senior housing, affordable housing, and preservation of open space. That alternative is available. We can have a smaller, less dense, more affordable project that is less destructive of the site, one that is tailored to the needs of the town, not to the maximization of profits." Thank you.
Next in the rear.
Michael Lee, 28 Wildwood Drive, and I'm on the regional school committee, and there have been a few issues relating to the schools brought up in the context of this debate, so I would like to just have a minute to respond to those.
Yes.
Just to be clear, our schools are expensive, but they are not $20,000.
Could everybody remain in your seat, please?
I just wanted some attention.
Okay, if you could proceed. Thank you.
So our schools are expensive, but they are not $20,000 per student. It's closer to about $15,000. And we're right, they are expensive because quality is expensive, and we are working hard to maintain the costs on this. We just completed a very difficult negotiation period to help restrain the growth of costs, but in the absence of new revenue for this town, we will go through year-after-year budget cycle where it'll be pitting schools against public safety, against roads, against the library, and many other features. I've also heard in this conversation several times, "We can do better." Well, if it is a 40B, we won't have a choice to do anything, and there is no town meeting discussion when a 40B project shows up on our doorstep. And this is close to my home, and I would frankly rather be close to this project than sit across the street from Whitney Farms, which is a 40B project, which has none of the features that people are desiring, and that is what we'll get. And this threat is real. Just a month ago, or two weeks ago, in Dover, they've been presented with a chance to purchase 27 acres for $5.5 million. Otherwise, a 40B project will go in with 40 units on 27 acres. This is 88 acres. Think about that. And we will have no choice, no town meeting to vote up or down. We'll just have the ZBA in negotiations with the developer who brings a 40B project to us, and the appeals court, which consistently votes in favor of developers. So the choice is this project, or much more likely, a project under 40B status that looks a lot like Whitney Farms. Do you want Whitney Farms in your town and in your neighborhood on even a larger scale than we have now?
Your time is up, sir. Yes, we'll take one more in the rear, and then we'll come down to the front again.
Yes, Rick Novak, 36 Nation Hill Road. Like many of the prior speakers, I've spent my entire career in and around development. And there are two important points here that have not been raised. When you have a large developer, and let's not kid ourselves for a second, Polte is not a small local developer. You know, this is not their first rodeo. They, and being a large company is not a sin. Large companies put in very good projects sometimes. But when you are a large company, and you have a large project like this, and you know you've got a gating factor, i.e. one factor that's going to drive everything, and in this case, it's groundwater and septic impacts, you get out ahead of it. You have your people study it, you go to the town, you often give the town some money so they can hire an independent consultant, and all those issues are on the table. Now, Polte has played hide the ball on that. That's not illegal. They're allowed to do that, but it tells us that maybe they have something to hide. The second important thing, and again, remember, Polte's very experienced, they've gone right past, and not mentioned to our council on aging once, that they clearly need a variance for this. Our zoning law says the EA cannot be granted for any land not within one mile. That means the end of the driveway here might be allowed, but the rest of it's, every single building will need a variance, and Polte has not disclosed that. And so I think anyone who votes for this, think about what you're voting for. Thank you.
We'll come down here in the front.
I'm George Morgan, I live at 41 Bear Hill Road. Two points. EA zoning is not going to prevent a 40B and can be a fast track to a 40B. Witness what is now happening in Dover next door, where the developer is now converting an EA to a 40B. This project can be easily turned into a 40B. And secondly, we are being asked to vote on rezoning a parcel of land on the premise that the project to be built on it will benefit the elderly. I speak from the 28 years' experience of my wife and her capacity of nursing home administrator and activities director, and my own over that time, directly supporting her efforts in senior care. While this project benefits the developer, it does not actually benefit the elderly, unless, that is, you believe, living in an off-road location in the woods, a quarter of a mile of a private driveway, out of public view, and isolated by over a mile from anywhere you might want to walk or drive is somehow a benefit. And you believe that walking or driving to the center of town on an uphill and winding road with outside walks is the most, to the most dangerous intersection in Sherburne is somehow a benefit. And you believe that being held financially liable for damage to wetlands in the event your common-use septic system fails is somehow a benefit. And you believe the opportunity to resell your property in an age-restricted, overstocked real estate market at an unrealistically high pricing is somehow a benefit. And you believe that potential buyers will be interested in a development that lacks reliable security of person and place, lacks health and wellness facilities and oversight, and lacks social programming is somehow a benefit. And you believe that paying on a semi-annual or annual basis fees and assessments for maintenance and repair that you may have had to address only once every five or 10 years for your previous home is somehow a benefit. Then you would not be among all of those seniors we've known during our 38 years of experience in senior care, seniors who saw such conditions not as benefits, but as problems for the elderly. What this project does offer, seniors want to avoid. Because these conditions do not benefit the elderly, but do not support the, and do not support the intent of EA zoning, we ask all of you here tonight, senior and non-senior alike, to vote no on Article 32.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you.
Could the people who are standing in the rear of the hall who have not had an opportunity to speak yet, please raise your hands so I can get a sense of how many of you there are. One, two, three, four. There are four of you? Is that correct? Why don't we consider, I believe you've had the opportunity to speak. Well, I think we began this discussion talking about the fact that we really had so many people who wanted to talk, that we'd only speak once. Why don't we take these four people, and then we'll think about moving on to the vote? Yes?
I'm Sybil Kaplan, 68 Maple Street, and George is going to be a hard one to follow. I've been told that if you vote no for Article 32, that you're voting against the elderly, and in my mind, it couldn't be further from the truth. I'm glad that Polte has not had the audacity to say that they are offering affordable housing, and everybody talks about how great a job Polte's doing listening, they're listening to their concerns, they're taking things into account, yet the one question that has been asked of Polte over and over again is, "Would you consider lowering the prices?" And they have said no. So in my mind, this idea of a 40B has been bandied about all night on both sides. We're going to be facing 40B regardless of whether this project goes through or not, until we meet our 10% affordable housing mandated by law, we are open to 40B projects, or unless, until we start meeting that mandate. I can't say who can, in Sherburne, can afford to move to these houses that Polte is going to be building, but I would imagine that a goodly number of our seniors looking to downsize cannot afford these houses. And then what options are they left with? They won't have any more options with this Polte project than they have today. We need to work towards addressing elderly and affordable housing, and we could probably do it in one shot without bringing in Polte. Thank you.
Next, please.
Warren Wheelwright, 137 Hunting Lane. I hear that we should vote for this EA to avoid it becoming a 40B. Well, there's nothing in this rezoning to a EA that prevents Polte, a renowned 40B developer, you just need to look at Hockington or Natick to invoke a 40B, either before it becomes an EA or after. Then I'd like to say that nowhere have I been seeing the proponents or others recognize that the town has had a trend toward older population of empty nesters providing revenue with reduced school costs. Six homes just on the brushhill network of Hunting Lane and area have sold to empty nesters who came to Sherburne for the open space. Seeing, then you're seeing the impact on reduced Pine Hill school enrollment out of that. And you just heard on Tuesday night, the special ed costs dropped, and that's probably mostly at Pine Hill. And then as time goes on, those kids will migrate to the high school, and you'll see a reduced portion in the share. With Dover, we don't need a 66-unit over-55 in a glutted market statewide. We have a five-year inventory statewide. And many more of our empty nesters have raised their children here, are staying, and I can look around here and see a lot who are staying, and I also have friends who went to New Hampshire and found out that there are all kinds of hidden costs, and that they didn't save that much over Sherburne. So don't ruin what is attracting and keeping our semi-senior citizens, and I'm probably going from semi-senior to senior, because Charlie Williams keeps telling me I'm a senior. Thank you.
Next.
Hi, Artist Flavell, 32 Maple Street. I'd like to just speak to the 55 and over concept, and I have concerns about the consistent and ongoing enforcement of this. On Tuesday night when we were all here, there was a gentleman who posed a question to advisory about something that happened three years ago, and there was no one on advisory who could answer it, because no one's been on advisory longer than three years, as I understand it. I happen to live right next to, one door away from Green Lane. I live next door to what used to be the American Legion Hall. For those of you who've been around, I'm sure you remember that hall. In 2005, that building still stood. It was one room. It didn't, it had outhouses. Today, well, it's on .4 acres of land. It went from being a separate property to being part of the property of the gentleman who lived across the street. Then he decided he wanted to put in a septic. It didn't pass. He subpoenaed everybody at town hall. He had a lot of money, too. That worked. Got the septic. Septic was put in. It was restricted to a home office septic, certain flow level allowed. Then he sold the whole piece of property. Someone else bought it. Those people said, "This is crazy. Why is this one piece of land?" They applied to separate it back, separated it back out, built a house there, were approved to build a house there, and now, where there was once a one-room building that would not perk, there is a house on .4 acres with a four-person family living in it, using a home office septic. And this happened because boards change, and things change, and people allow things.
Thank you. Your time is up, yes. I believe you are the last speaker.
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
So Aaron Gamble, 56 Green Lane. My wife and I moved to Sherburne two years ago, so we're actually fairly new, and this is my first town meeting. Thank you. So we moved for the open land and for the quiet. We, we were both born in the 70s, so besides the fact that we're about the same age as our house, I just want to reference that, because when I think about this issue, I'm thinking about the next 30 years, and I'm thinking about that longer arc of what Sherburne's going to be and what our home is going to be. And I very much think that we can do better, that we can develop affordable housing on a scale that we need to, on a smaller scale, on a targeted scale, and do this in a focused way that makes sense for the needs of the town. And I would much prefer to see a vibrant, really walkable downtown space with diversified business that provided for the needs of the tax base of the town. So thank you.
All right. Excuse me, I think...
Madam Moderator.
Yes.
Pat Cassell, 226 Western Avenue. I move the question.
Well, since the question was, has formally been moved, we'll...
I'm formally moving it, if you need some support.
We were going to move to the vote. That requires a two-thirds vote. Let's try and do it on a voice vote. All those in favor of moving the question and going to the vote, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. I am going to preemptively ask if there are 50 people who would raise their hands to indicate that they would like a paper ballot. I believe we've got 50 people. So if you would please take out the ballot that you received when you came in this evening, it is pink, and we are going to be using ballot number one, and you're going to tear off either yes or no. Please do not fold it in half. It will facilitate vote counting if you don't fold it in half. And I remind you that while we are in the process of voting, collecting the votes, and counting the votes, you must remain in your seats. Please stay seated, and the tellers will come to you. Excuse me, it has been requested that we restate the motion, and it is a motion that I will re, I will repeat the whole thing, just so everybody knows, it's been a long discussion. It was moved that the town vote to rezone from Residence District B to Residence District EA, the land located at 90 Maple Street, assessors map six, lot 66, and map seven, lot two, and grant preliminary... and grant preliminary development plan approval pursuant to Section 5.6.3 of the zoning bylaw, so as to permit the development of over 55 housing on said land as detailed in the preliminary development plan presented at town meeting, or any amendment approved at town meeting. Okay, that's what we're voting on. So, ballot one, yes or no? A yes vote is in favor of the rezoning, of creating the EA zoning. There were 428 ballots cast. The number was 157 yes, 271 no. The motion fails. It required a two-thirds majority. That completes tonight's business. Would someone offer a motion to dissolve the town meeting?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Aye.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion, the meeting's dissolved.